The purpose of this workshop today is to review the draft contract that's been provided by the York County Sheriff's Department that would take effect this coming December, January 1st, I guess. The intent is to review the contract, see if there are some changes. They primarily seem to be around termination, as I can see it, probably dealing with some of the events over the last year when there was a vacancy and think to clarify how the contract would be handled in situations like that. So, why don't we just go page by page? If the list is something someone wants to, you know, comment on before that, go page by page and see if we can get through this quickly.
Make sure that everybody knows that there's a selectman from Shapley.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we are on tape. So, we have the selectmen from Shapley. Would you like to introduce yourself, gentlemen? Just say your names.
Bill McGary.
Mike Cody.
Scott Godworth.
Great. And I think everyone else is not here. Very good.
The town administrator from Shapley.
Yes.
We don't want to have anybody confuse us. She's not our treasurer, no more.
Shall we start with page one?
Sure.
Any comments?
Well, I mean, we talked in our selectmen's room when we were talking about signing this contract, and obviously, we had some hiccups there, you know, during this contract with the, I believe it was the three months we were without a deputy.
Something like that, yeah.
So, my concern was, looking at the contract, I have no problem with the contract, other than a couple little things they put in there, which I just don't see a lot of, it's covering them more than, meaning the contract covers their tail more than it covers ours. Meaning, I don't see anything in here, really, where if this occurrence happens again, where is there anything to say in that they're going to provide, they're going to do their due diligence and try to get this deputy back in place.
You're saying there's no teeth in this contract for the towns.
Well, that's exactly my point. I mean, I see in the, where they put down, you know, where if the 30-day notice, okay, it was a 30 or 60, I think it was a 30-day notice.
Yes, it was 30.
Okay, and that was it. Yeah, I didn't see anything, really, where it says, okay, we're going to, you know, we will, in a certain amount of time, provide a new deputy. Meaning, the problem I had with the last occurrence that we had was, they had no plan.
From my point of view, the last contract, they violated it.
Well, I do, too. I believe that also. So, you know, they covered themselves in this, but there's nothing for us.
And that's really the purpose of the meeting. I think when we get to page four, when Tom gets there, they did add a stipulation that better covers them, and that would be our place to add something that would better suit the town.
Yeah.
So, that's always pass this contract on to our legal, too, and have him look at it.
Right, but the idea is that you get all your proposed changes in there first, so that the legal can take a look at what you guys want as well.
Right, right. Because, I mean, honestly, we went three months without having a contract deputy.
Right.
And with the voters, well, the townspeople, you know, they expect it, because, you know, when they get something, that's what they expect, you know, when you go to town meeting, we approve this money, and, you know, they'd rather see the money spent in full and get their service than to say, well, you just don't have to charge us. You know, just don't charge us, we're not going to charge you for them, because we don't have them. That's not the point of this. The point is to have the actual contract deputy. So, I would like to have something where, like, contracts that I have to sign, like, when I signed a contract for the city of Sanford for their plowing for three years, if I don't perform my duties, then it's on me.
Right.
There's nothing here, this is all, pretty much, they can do us a service and just walk away at any time they want. So, I don't know, by bringing you guys in here, whether or not you feel the same way or not, maybe you don't, but I figure with the group of us here, we could come up with something, at least give us some sort of recourse, you know, because, I mean, honestly, they brought it to us, this is something they introduced, we didn't go to them back in the day and say, hey, we want a contract deputy, they brought that to us, and then, so I feel that there should be something here where there's some recourse or something in writing, saying, we are going to provide a contract deputy after a certain amount of time.
To piggyback on what you just said, Dave, when this was first, when the idea of a contract deputy was first proposed to the town of Shapley, at that time, Sheriff Oulet was, I'm sheriff. I very distinctly remember that meeting, and the question was asked, well, what happens if our deputy is vacation, personal, whatever, not present? He had said that he would make sure that that person, that slot was backfilled with somebody. Obviously, there's a change of administration there now, and that's not the case.
So, I look at the contract, and one thing that popped out, and I didn't notice it last time, maybe because it's been something where it's been just ongoing, decided, because it's kind of an ongoing thing, but then I see the increase of cost, that, you know, there's quite an increase in this deputy, in this contract, but what kind of, I saw was the 400 hours of PTO. Now, you take that 400 hours of PTO, and I highly doubt they're going to take, you know, what would that be, 10 weeks? Would that be 10 weeks? Yeah, 10 weeks, 10 weeks of vacation.
It's almost seven and a half hours a week.
Yeah. You know, so, the unfortunate part about that is, if you take all those hours, that's time that we're not going to have that contract deputy.
Right.
On top of training, and, you know, and we're already limited, you know, everybody, I believe everybody in town believes we're going to get 20 hours a week, every week, and we're not. So, I think a lot of this meeting, too, is, anybody that watches this might understand the real pieces of how this really works. And it's kind of concerning, because if you take, you know, 52 weeks out of the year, and say they take, the deputy takes five weeks off, you know, that's a lot.
Yep.
It's a lot of time. So, but then, between that and the idea that I don't believe that the contract benefits us in a bad spot at all, it benefits the York County Sheriff's Department completely, I like to see if we can come up with some sort of ideas of how we can...
What do you think the solution would be to, okay, obviously, this deputy has his time accrued, and, you know, so he's got these 400 hours, would we, you know, put in there something like, you know, we want coverage, we don't want just...
Yeah, we can't have five to 10 weeks without a jet deputy, just because someone takes time off.
Right, so are they going to replace it with a body, not just, you know...
Yeah, because in the contract, it says you're just going to go back to typical, you know, typical police, and if that's the case, then, you know, during that three to four months that we didn't have that deputy, you know, nobody came up here and said, hey, where's our deputy? Nobody even noticed it, you know. They'll notice it, I guess, if we don't have one at all, but, and I guess that kind of goes against my point of, well, I guess you could take four weeks off, we did three, four months without them, but I think at the end of the day, when we're paying, I think, $160,000, well, it's $137,000, that we want to make sure we're getting our best bang for a buck, especially with an increase. And I think that's my...
Do you know what the hourly rate is for this officer?
Do you have the numbers in front of you?
We don't have it in this paper, I thought it was.
Well, I'm trying to understand this paid time off, because that's essential to what we're talking about here. Typically, when you're quoted an hourly rate in an annual budget number, that number, if they're taking time off during the normal work week, that annual salary covers paid time off, because they're not, unless I misunderstand it, they're not getting paid extra over and above their normally weekly wage when they take time off. So, they're charging us, I believe, the full annual salary and the full paid time off. So, it seems to me we're paying twice for whatever time they work, they take off during the normal work week. Some of that could go into a bank, that when they leave, they could be paid, but if they're taking it off during the week, it seems to me it may be double counted, unless there's something about the way they do it I don't understand. The hourly rate is about 30...
3683.
3683. So, I assume that's their hourly rate, and they're getting that at presumably 40 hours a week, which is the $76,000, but we're also paying for paid time off, and I'm not sure they're always paying that out if it's taken during the, if it's taken while they're employed.
One comment I'd like to make is, my take on this, and I think it's pretty accurate, is that basically, what you're doing is buying that deputy. So, if you've got 23 deputies in the sheriff's office, they all have different situations. Some may not take the insurance, because their wife might have it, or her husband, whatever. So, what you're doing is, you're basically buying whatever deputy you get.
Exactly.
Anything that's attached to him in the way of benefits, time off, the rate of pay, you own that deputy. On paper, you're paying all the costs for that deputy, and I think that's the way it has to be looked at. So, that means if you have five years on the job, and I have 15 years on the job, you're going to be less than I'm going to be.
That's completely, I understand all that completely. When you say we're buying a deputy...
Yep.
We are, and we aren't. When you hired an individual, say, the town of Acton or town of Shapley hired this individual, you know, with this contract, it shows that we have no powers of negotiation, we have, you know, this individual is under somebody else's command, so we're subcontracting this deputy.
I understand that, but what I mean, I meant that in the context that...
Benefit-wise.
Any, yeah, any cost associated with that deputy comes on to us.
Yep.
The contract said they want to be made whole, as though, whether the deputy, contracted deputy is in place or not, the county wants them made whole. The point I was trying to make was, it seems to me we're paying for, we're paying extra for when they're not here, and it seems to me that fund, if you will, the amount that's in here, ought to be able to help them fund someone to provide a replacement when someone's on vacation, or they're taking any kind of paid time off. Our administrators, does that make sense?
It makes sense to me, I mean, in the perfect world where they were staffed to be able to just throw somebody over here, we all know that they, any emergency services right now are understaffed, so I don't think, they don't have the budget, nor the staff to dedicate, and I think that's what we've heard over and over, to dedicate, you know, pull somebody out who's normally covering the whole county and put them just in Acton and Shapley for 40 hours. I think, I think that's the problem.
Yeah.
I think they have the budget, because we're giving it to them. They may not have the staff, because they may not have someone they can reassign to them, but they have the resources to do it, and if they aren't going to do it, it seems to me the budget ought to be reduced.
And I agree with that. I think on the staffing issue, whenever you take on a contract, it's up to the person or the company or whatever, municipality, if, when you do a contract, that you've got to make sure you can fulfill the contract, and, you know, and I'll bring back up, again, okay, I go, and I'm going to go snowplow a road, and I have three trucks break down, it's my obligation to make sure I've got three other ones or another one to replace that. Now, I know they have, and I don't want to tell the sheriff's department how to do their job, but I know they're running skinny. I mean, everybody's having a hard time with getting help and all that, I'm in the same boat, but when you're putting contracts out there and you're going to perform a task, then you have to have a contingency plan.
Yep.
And with the, with all these contract deputies they have out there, you, my idea, I would think that they would have a designated person...
To do coverage.
To cover Waterboro...
A floater.
Yeah, a floater, and I don't see that. And when you bring that contract to us and say, well, if we don't have anybody, you're just on your own, like you usually are, I just don't like that.
Okay.
So, when we look at, when we look at page two of this contract, assuming you guys don't have concerns with page one, I mean, you're looking at that last line, let's come up with something under D to propose to the sheriff's department, because that's what you guys are talking about. It says, "The town understands that law enforcement service will be provided by regular routine patrol, and the coverage received will be the same as other towns. So, if you're not, if we're not happy with that piece, let's come up with some language, you know, even if it's, you know, we'll meet you in the middle and we want to guarantee 20 hours while on vacation." I mean, you know, we've got to come up with the wording to present back to them.
There's just one thing I'd like to say, because I think it may be something you're interested in, it may not. What about if we put this contract back out to them and ask them to do hours instead of one particular deputy? So, you, so they give us, so that way, you'd get 40 hours, you'd pay for 40 hours, and you'd get it. So, in other words, they would take the regular rotation, they would take the starting scale and go to the end scale and come somewhere in the middle and give us a cost based on that. Would you consider that?
Does, I mean, the only thing that's going to, that's going to solve is probably the PTO time, right?
Well, you're going to, it's going to be a little, I think it's going to be a little bit more money, but what I'm trying to say is, then you truly do get your 40 hours. We get the 20, you get the 20. That's the contract.
I don't think, I'm not worried about whether or not you guys are getting more hours than we're getting over here. What I'm worried about is, at the end of the day, not having a deputy at all.
Right, but if you allow them to put, to move people around where they need to be, now that becomes part of the regular rotation for the department, so they have to cover you. You follow me?
But you, but the problem you're going to have with that, they have their, we have our police car.
Yeah, you don't have, you won't have that anymore.
Okay, with that, it would be gone.
That'll be gone, yes.
And I just, I don't believe that we have to make any, and I don't want to cost any more money than we already are, because I think...
It would be more, I believe.
I believe the increase we've gotten right now is plenty.
Okay. I'm just throwing that out as food for thought. That would take care of all of these problems, because now we have a contract like...
But at the end of the day, and I think we spoke about this once when we were over there, the issue I have with it is, and I've said this before, and I want to make sure everybody's clear there, I do believe this deputy is a good thing, I just believe that the way it's done is kind of odd.
Right, but that's why I bring up this Plan B, because I think it's, if that's what your concern is, I think that's...
What you're really doing is, like I've said before, we pay our county tax, and we expect to get coverage, and there's something here that says that they don't have to, which is kind of odd. When you pay for a service, you expect to get one. So, but by, by doing it like what you're saying is, okay, we're going to pay on top of the original county tax that we're already paying, correct?
Yeah, we're doing that now anyway, by subsidizing.
And I know, and, but, the biggest upside of having this deputy, I believe, is the idea that they could enforce our local ordinances.
The department would be authorized to do that, I think, if you did it this way. I think you could do it that.
I think in the interview process, we were very interested in having an experienced officer.
Yep.
And if it's at their discretion who they assign, you're not going to know who that is...
That's true.
Whether they're a rookie.
Yep.
We're paying $36 a hour.
Yep.
We may get people assigned that are at a much lesser rate, or maybe a higher rate, and I'm not sure how they would handle it.
But that's a decision you've got to make. Do you want to keep it to a local guy who you know?
Yeah.
Or do you want to make sure that you get those 40 hours every week?
And I don't, I don't believe the problem we have is whether or not, it's not the having that one individual, it's whether or not that we know that during this contract, that we have some sort of recourse, we make sure we still have this individual, or another one is in line when this individual was...
I think this would be more easily enforceable if you had a contract that said you will provide a deputy for 40 hours a week to the towns of Acton and Shapley. I mean, I'm not trying to...
Let's change that line and see what, what it will back to.
I think, given that the funding is there to cover leave, that we say, we want this deputy 40 hours a week, and if they aren't here to service for vacation or other reasons, they provide a substitute, and it shouldn't cost us anything. It should be consistent with this budget. So, they just would have an obligation to do that, but we keep the deputy that we chose.
And you kind of have to keep the deputy that we chose for, like, well, like I just said, with the ordinances. We can't have, they're not going to have every deputy down there, go through the tack, you know, because we really, we've actually got to meet with our deputy that we have now, because we've got some, like, some roads that we're going to post. That deputy's got to be familiar with our Acton ordinances, because he can enforce them, that's why we did this.
I understand that.
And you'd do that there, you'd have to have every single one of them do that, and that wouldn't work.
The reason I'm mentioning it is, it's an option.
Yep.
Okay? And if you really feel adamant about the hours and the time, if you feel more adamant about the fact that you, you're going to have somebody you know that's your deputy, okay, and your name's on the car, then that's fine. So, I'm just throwing that out as a possible thing, because I think that would be a, they have added several deputies in the last month, okay? They hired two new ones just a couple weeks ago, and they've been out with Deputy Sandborn, actually, in this area, and there, looks like they're going to be hiring more, because what they're getting now is a lot of retirees from, like, Old Orchard, they picked up two from Old Orchard, they picked up another one, I think, from Benefit that retired, and he's coming over to the sheriff's office. So, I think now you're going, and you also have union issues you've got to deal with, and if you've got a cruiser that's assigned to a deputy, that's our deputy, they're not going to be switching off to come up here.
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just put some language in here that says that they're to provide coverage with a substitute officer, to the extent the officer is not available to serve in their regular schedule?
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that's all a lot of us.
I don't have a problem with that.
And there should be no budgeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I know they're looking at that now, at that, what we're talking about. Some towns are interested in that, some aren't. Waterboro, I think, is, Toone is looking at adding a third deputy.
Office.
So, again, it's all a matter of what we want. It's nice to have your own deputy, but it's also nice to know that somebody's going to be there 40 hours a week, and you're going to get that.
I don't want to talk about how other towns run their business, but I would think, when you start hiring multiple police officers through another department, you know, I mean, I would think that at some point, there would be some numbers, crunch, trying to figure out whether or not you're paying it off, hire, just hire your own.
Yeah, I think that. At some point, it becomes...
Yeah, because, I mean, the issue I have with this, this contract is, is, part of it is, you know, what we're doing is, we're subcontracting, we have no negotiating, no this, no that, because of the union, and we know, you know, that's the way that works. I couldn't imagine having multiple employees through a union that we have no control over, that would be, that'd be a toughie.
Well, it's the same thing, you've got the patrol towns now, you've got a pool of officers that go out and patrol these towns, you would just be making sure that you have one in Acton and Shapley for that 40 hours.
So, are you comfortable with the amendment that I just described, inserting some language in that, in that way? Does that work for you folks?
I'm okay with it.
Michelle and I will work together on redoing that last line to essentially, that's going to say something to the effect that we want coverage while they're out on PTO time.
I'm fine with it.
I just, that was the only thing that really kind of stuck out to me, you know, and with the, with the last, you know, those months there that we didn't have a deputy, it didn't kind of felt like we were kind of put on the back burner, it was like, they have the opportunity to walk away, and we can't. We walk away, we pay the difference, they walk away.
I just think it adds a degree of difficulty when you have a dedicated deputy. It just makes it a little tougher, okay? I'm not saying it's not, it's a good thing, but you...
The town of Acton, the people that I talk to, you know, they like the idea of seeing that, Acton-Shapley...
Yeah, I get it.
They're paying for something, because at the end of the day, when you don't have that, it feels to me like, oh, we're doing is, we're paying our county tax, and then we're throwing some more money at them on the side, because that's what you're doing. By having, at least having the name on the side of the thing, saying, we bought that car.
Okay, I'm okay with that, I'm just looking at alternatives.
Yeah, I think they also know that the deputy has been vetted by the selectmen, by the town, which ought to give them some confidence, they know who's showing up at the door, is a very capable, competent individual. And another question, I guess we're kind of bouncing back and forth with the budget, do we know that these benefit numbers all tie in to the contract, the union contract?
No.
Because when you look, typically, benefits in a very rich environment are about 30% of salaries. It's like, you take the salary, add another 30% for benefits, this is 56%. I've never seen a benefit, now, maybe that's law enforcement, I'm not familiar with law enforcement benefit programs, but that's, if I add the benefits up, it's 56% add-on to the salary. So, I just want to make sure, maybe we could just make an inquiry, to make sure that the benefit amount is really directly tied to the, to the union contract, okay? I don't want to go into the detail, I just think we ought to ask that question.
All right, so we'll work on that line. The only other thing I wanted to ask on page two is, did you know, it says that copies of approved bargaining agreements come to the Acton and Shapley. Have you guys ever seen that on either side? Because I think since we started this contract, six, nine years ago, we've never received. The other reports we certainly get regularly, but I've never seen anything there, so I wanted to point that out to the sheriff's department when we get to it.
Where are you, Jennifer?
Under C, it says that the sheriff's department shall provide, the very last report, copies of approved bargaining statements that pertain to Acton-Shapley deputy.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if you guys have seen anything like that.
I've never seen. If it says it, we should be asking for it.
Let's get one.
And then, under E, I might want to make note, so under E on the same page, I know most of you probably have black and white, I don't know if you have black and white or colors, but this is something that you might want to consider. So, it says, "After notice," this is from our last situation, "after notice to the town, the sheriff retains the right to temporarily reassign the deputy to other patrol functions as needed for operational efficiency. In the event the sheriff exercises his right to reassign and does not properly re-sign, the town will not be liable." So, this gives him the 14-day notice to remove our deputy for another assignment. That's a new addition from last year, so...
But will they...
For temporary reassignment.
Yes.
And it says here that they have to...
Well, it says, "Or permanent."
Does not promptly assign a different deputy to function.
So, in theory, if they got short on personnel, they can give us a 14-day notice and then have that individual cover all of your county, if need be, but it doesn't have to be permanent.
Right, so really, another town, another town, and I think this is what's kind of being talked about out there, is that another town that might have a higher population and more numbers than Acton-Shapley could lose their deputy, and a council from another town could convince them to pull Acton-Shapley's to move to another town.
Go to Waterboro.
They've effectively terminated the contract at that point, haven't they?
Well, no.
If it's around here, they can.
Huh? No, but if they pull someone permanently, they've effectively terminated the contract.
Correct.
Now, that language in there goes back to what we were just discussing. If that language stays in there, that will allow the sheriff to take the routine patrol, which might or might not be in your area. I mean, you're not guaranteed you're going to have personnel there.
Well, maybe that needs to be tweaked as well.
I mean, the idea is that if we sign a contract, they need to see it through, we need to see it through, they need to see it through, and not really have all these options to remove.
You know what I say, throw out whatever you want to throw out at them, okay? And let's see what they come back with, because nobody's ever done that before.
If you don't ask, you don't get, so...
That's right. So, whatever you're feeling, put it out there.
The way I look at it is, I mean, I don't want to make it any tougher on them than we have to.
No, I get it.
But...
You're going to look out for the town.
I think, I think, yeah, and I think probably what we were talking about before was, you know, and I said, oh, well, we just kept signing them, kept signing them, and then when something happens, then you go, oh, geez, we kind of woke up to it, and maybe we ought to start looking at this stuff a little bit, and now that we had this incident last year where we had, you know, the months without it, and then now they're covering themselves, saying, okay, well, we can cover ourselves now, but we're just going to make sure we protect ourselves.
Is there anywhere in here where they talk about how the officer is supervised?
No. No, there's some...
And who's supervised?
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Whoever the shift supervisor is for those towns, that evening day or overnight, that would be the supervisor. That's how it works.
I think by changing this up a little bit, making sure, it's going to make them look at, okay, maybe we have to make some adjustments to make sure that we can make sure this contract is, it's provided like it's supposed to be.
Sure, yeah.
If we, if we don't, then they're just going to continue doing what they do.
I think it's a great idea.
So, Shapley, do you all agree that we tweak E a little bit, based on what they put in there? in there? Take some of that out and try to get them to reconsider?
We'll reconsider.
You're good, okay. Do you guys have anything else on page two?
I don't.
On page three, they deleted this paragraph, "Your county shall provide the town written response to citizen inquiries." Do we know why that was, why that was deleted? It seemed like a reasonable, um, provision. Am I reading that correctly, that it was deleted?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Want that back in there?
I don't know why. It would be nice to know why they took it out.
Yeah, we never, we never got it anyways in the last nine years, but, yeah, it'd be interesting, but let's ask them.
I think it may, just from a standpoint of somebody who listens to concerned citizens often, it may consume all of their time writing all of these written responses to each inquiry.
It does.
Um, it's, it's time consuming.
How do, how do we get a, make sure the citizen gets a response to their complaint?
We don't, we assume that if they don't, then we point them to their deputy supervisor. I think the other piece on top of what Michelle said is, they may be trying not to share, I mean, they give us those monthly reports that are already detailed enough, I don't know about you, but when I read them aloud, I'm struggling to remove names and the actual incidences, you know? They just, sometimes they feel like they don't need to share all of everything going on out there.
No, I, I appreciate that.
Also, it, probably legally, if the response, whatever response they give, if something happens, I don't know where it comes to the court, they'd be able to use that, I don't know.
Some of this may be an employee, uh, personnel related type of thing as well, I don't know, but I'm guessing that it could have something to do with it.
We'll ask them why they took it out.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Um, above that, I just highlighted the, um, I don't know if you had any concerns with it, says the towns understand that the vehicle will be used for patrolling outside of the town boundaries when the contract deputy works overtime or has out-of-town official business to include but not limited training meetings. Now, certainly if he's doing trainings or meetings on behalf of Acton and Chapley, that's one thing, but if he's working overtime, filling shifts in other towns.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, that's not.
Is, is that new? It looked like it.
Where, where?
I got a black and white, so I can't tell.
What page is that on?
Top of page three.
Right at the very top.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't believe it's new.
I thought that was from day one, but I could be.
It probably is, I just, if we were going through it.
That's a great question, yeah.
And I guess the question would be, on the average, how many hours of overtime, you know, we could get maybe three years' worth of report, just to see if it's really worth pursuing, I mean, maybe they're not working that much overtime, but if it's extensive, it seems like.
Well, maybe we should ask them to include that in their reports as, as a specific item, and then if it's, you know, it becomes a large number, then we can challenge it.
Yes, you see, I can understand if, say, um, that overtime was put in in Acton or Chapley, but you're taking a vehicle that's being paid to be maintained by the town, both towns, and then putting it into another town, that, it just doesn't really make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're paying for the maintenance.
I think the reason for that is because it is, and I'm not saying it's a good reason, but it's, that's deputy, that's his cruiser now.
I understand that.
And, uh, rather than him go into the, to the garage and say, what have you got? And go through all that stuff, I'm not saying they shouldn't do it that way, they probably should, but I think that's the.
More of an emergency situation where they're.
Yeah, that circumstances, I could see.
But sometimes they put in for other shifts.
Okay.
Okay, so let's say a guy puts in for a midnight shift in, in another town, he'd use the cruiser for that.
Okay. I mean, in Chapley, I'm backward, you must see the Rundle, the Rundle guy always has somebody pulled over on back road.
Yeah, and you field as well.
He's everywhere, that Rundle deputy.
Right.
And if I was a Rundle resident, I would just say peace.
You mean, he's patrolling Chapley.
You're gonna get pulled over by another town, right?
I don't know if he's doing overtime or what he's doing, but he's.
Maybe that needs to be looked at as well, if you, you know, but again, how often does it happen?
Well, I think Tom had a great idea, if we asked them to report the overtime monthly in their monthly report.
Yeah, we can monitor.
Then you can decide.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because if it's not a whole lot, if it's a lot of it's emergency stuff more than anything, but if it's somewhere, the guy's cars put ten, fifteen hours a week in another town, you know, which probably won't, because I know they won't pay that kind of overtime.
You know, in, in relationships like this, I think it's important not to, you know, nail it down so tightly. It's, it's a cooperative, and sometimes we favor, sometimes they do, and as long as there's give and take, then for the sake of good relations and support, you know, we just kinda let that go.
I agree.
But we oughta know what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, anything else on three?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment on the cost, the town shall pay the base amount and buy annual installments in April and October, as never been done.
Because they'll bill us.
How had it been done?
Um, so, uh, the first couple of years of the contract, uh, I think they had billed us twice a year, but certainly not in April and October, because those would be convenient dates. Uh, more recently, in the recent contract, they've been billing us quarterly, um, in what should be July, oftentimes it's August before we get the bill, and, and, you know, kinda the, the same with all of the other quarterly bills.
Is it in advance, Michelle, or?
No, it's not in advance.
It's, it's, you know, so, uh, July first, we're paying for the prior quarter?
Correct, ideally, yes.
All right. Um, I never liked paying for things before we get them, so, um, yeah.
So I, I just, you know, they, they've kept that, that terminology in there and they've never, that's never been when they bill.
Although, when I looked at those dates.
Oftentimes, I have to call and say, can I have a bill?
You know, when I looked at those dates, April, the, the contract becomes effective January, and if we're paying in April, January through June, then we're paying like three months in advance and three months in arrears. So it, it seemed reasonable from a cash flow perspective for the sheriff's department that they, they billed on that cycle. But if we could get quarterly in arrears, I think that would be great.
All right.
But it, but it's not an unreasonable payment schedule.
As I say, you can get these two, you have to build against all.
Especially when you come to end of year, you know, because you could be waiting a month, a month and a half to be able to, because you don't know what that bill's gonna be, so you can't, you can't properly book a payable.
It, it varies?
It varies, yeah.
Because of, because the, I would assume from the, huh?
Actual costs incurred.
Oh, for the operating expenses?
Yeah.
Because I assume everything above is sort of fixed, the salaries and the benefits are, are, probably don't vary?
Uh, well, they, they do a little bit, um, they budget for, you know, the whole PTO buyout, they might not use it, they, they budget for somebody who, um, you know, so they're, in their contracts to the union, there are things that they, they could use, but they might not use them, or they will use them, so we only incur those costs when they do use.
So they only bill us for PTO when it's paid out?
Correct.
Right.
But the budget looks like it's covering the four, four hundred hours, so.
But there, we may, we're not gonna spend a hundred and thirty-seven thousand unless they.
No, and what I was saying earlier, it may not be true, some of that PTO would likely be unspent and perhaps available for coverage when.
They budget for, I think, the sixty-five hundred, right, that separate line.
Right, but, and then that goes into a liability, because should that deputy leave during the contract, that's our cost, they have to pay it out upon his termination.
Actually, I think the money is actually there to cover a replacement person, so let's, let's, let's put that forth to them and, uh, let's, let's hear their response.
You guys agree with that?
I agree with it, like I said, hit them with everything you wanna hit them with. Now's the time to do it, and then we'll see what we get.
Yep.
All right, Tommy, good with, and page four?
Page four, yes. Trying to move along, Jennifer.
See, the biggest part of the conversation is the eight, because that, that is worth a change, so they added the, um, so either party may cancel this agreement prior to the expiration date by giving thirty days written notice to the other party and specifying the termination date. If the town cancels the agreement, there will be the responsibility for the costs associated with the service under the agreement through the termination date. But what about if the sheriff's department canceled it?
They should be called responsible to get a replacement for us.
Pretty one-sided paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. That was my concern, was a lot of this is one-sided, there's no protection on either town.
I don't know how you build that in.
Typically, in any contract that you sign, if you, you negate the contract, in the middle of the contract is usually a financial, um.
Well, if you go backwards in this contract and we talk about the fourteen day notice that, that deputy may be permanently, temporarily or permanently reassigned, so typically, ideally, they have fourteen days to terminate our contract, because if they don't.
Yeah.
Reassign somebody, we're not liable for it, so they've, they've cut that thirty days down to fourteen days.
Well, they've put thirty here, but it's fourteen on the other one, so, at the end of the day, it's really fourteen days.
But if they can cancel it with no ramifications, if you will, then the town should be able to do the same.
It, it does give us that right, does it not?
No.
Well, no, it just says that we're gonna pay it out for the remainder of the contract.
Well, through the, through the designated termination date, which would be thirty days, I mean.
Well, no, I took.
If we're, if we're doing apples to apples, it should be fourteen days, because they've got, they've got fourteen days, you know, in, um.
I'm sorry, I took that as the con, through paying the rest of the contract, you're right, termination.
All right, so it's just the termination date? See, I thought the same thing.
And we're provided coverage through the termination date, correct? Or is that not clear in there?
No.
Well, no, getting our regular services.
We do not promptly assign.
So they're, so they're providing the coverage through the termination date and we're obligated to pay it.
Not a deputy, though, we're, I mean, I, I'm taking it as they'll receive, the coverage received will be the same as towns without a contract deputy.
Right, towns, they're just being counted.
If they give us notice, then they only have to do.
Well, the payment ought to be tied to whenever the coverage stops, the payment stops.
Well, it does, it, it says we don't have to pay for it if they get rid of it, but.
For fourteen days?
They're gonna give us, like she said, once part of it says fourteen days, they get fourteen days, and then back here it says thirty days.
Yeah.
So, but what we're trying to figure out is, if they do say, they'll say the fourteen days, what's our recourse? We have none right now.
Well, I think we also have to remember, they're writing the contract.
Yeah.
They're gonna write it to their benefit.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, this is a good thing we're doing here, because we're actually challenging it and trying to streamline it.
Do they have auxiliary offices?
No.
No, they don't.
No. I mean, they do have some reserves that they use from time to time, but they have to be academy certified.
Exactly.
And the union guys usually will take that overtime and that extra shift, so they don't use reserves very often.
And really, what, what their mistake is, because it's union, and I'm not a big union guy, so, but, uh, that's the mistake they make, is, you know, like myself, I got part-timers to work for me, if I don't need them, I still have to come in a day or two here or there, just so I keep them on the hook, so I still have help.
Right.
What they should be doing is finding some work for these guys off and on to keep them on the hook and, you know.
But the, but the contract agreement is, uh, is, uh, what controls that.
Yeah, oh, I understand, and the, the union, union.
Yeah, it's just the way it is, unfortunately, but.
I'm not sure what to do there, David.
It's a tough.
I mean, they'd almost need to hire a floater to cover all of their contracted towns, you know, in the event that there's a, I don't think they're gonna do that, probably economical for them, so I don't know how to do it.
They could tell you no anyways.
Yeah, so.
The only way that a contract is effective is monetary, and if you put a monetary cost in there, you know, there's a fee to them, if they, you know, that's, whether or not they'll go, they're not gonna go with that, you know, because they, I doubt it, but I mean, there's gotta be some sort of impact on each side. We're gonna get an impact if, if we don't get our deputy, they don't have any impact if they decide to say, I think another town is more important.
Well, if we terminate the contract early, they've got a deputy they've gotta pay with no money. So there is an impact, I, I don't wanna argue their side, but if, if we terminate, they still have a deputy, and they're not gonna terminate that deputy, probably the union wouldn't let them, so they're gonna be obligated to pay them without a revenue stream to pay them. So I, I can understand from their perspective why they've written the contract.
Well, let me just tell you this, it, if, if you've got so many, let's say you got twenty-three deputies, and, or you got twenty-eight deputies, and three or four of those are contract deputies, okay? And a couple of towns say, no, we're not doing this anymore. If they're not shorthanded and they're full-staffed, the last people that came on are gonna get laid off.
Oh, really?
That's the way it works with, uh, grants, when the grant runs out, the job runs out.
I get grants, but.
Yeah, but that, it would work that way.
It would work the same way.
I've never seen it happen, because it's always, it's always been shorthanded.
They always get vacancies.
But they have that ability to do that, yeah.
I understand, I understand the part of their part, covering their tail, because, you know, they got a budget for this individual. Uh, I'm just, we're, I like to come up with some sort of something where we have some sort of upper hand here, you know, and I, I just don't see a whole lot, that's why we're, we invited you guys over here to help us out.
We gotta work, we gotta work together, I mean, we, you know, and we should be working together, and I think it's.
How do you think they handled it the last time? Not very well? Was there, and what would we have liked them to have done?
Do you think the circumstances were a little bit out of their control too, with the issues of such a shortage of workers? I mean, I'm just, I know they didn't handle it well at all.
Would have liked them to make us aware of the situation before they just pulled the trigger on our deputy.
I think they could have, I mean, they, they promoted somebody, that person didn't leave service, they promoted somebody. They could have held back on it until we had something.
That's an interesting.
Well, this is, but this is the, this is the problem with that, though, okay? So let's say we're all deputies here, okay? And some of us are contract, or we're asked to take a contract. I don't think so, not if I'm gonna give up becoming sergeant, so you gotta understand that side of it too.
You can't stop a promotion.
No, but they should have taken care of it the other way, okay?
They should have backed them somehow.
I won't argue that, but I, I don't disagree with them doing the promotion, uh, but I think they, they should have made sure that the contract was taken care of.
Well, with that promotion, when you do a promotion, I'm sure you just walk in one day and say, you know what, I think we're gonna do a promotion today, there had to have been something leading up to that.
Uh, sure, because if somebody, if somebody leaves, which happens, they retire, they go to another department, now we need a sergeant.
So at that point there.
Yeah.
When they know that there's gonna be a promotion being made.
But they don't know who it is until, I bet you this is someplace in the union contract, is what it is.
Sheriff can hold us that, but, but I think your point is that he's still, that even with this deputy getting the promotion, because you're absolutely right, we can't hold him back, maybe they could have even left him even as a sergeant with us a little longer until we sorted it.
Yes, yep.
Found a, a middle ground instead of just pulling him out.
They used to leave them as sergeants when they promoted them, okay? Then they stopped doing that and said, no, because they reached, the problem is sometimes Then they stopped doing that and said, no, because they reached, the problem is sometimes that sergeant has to go to another town where there's an incident happening and supervise the deputies there. And that's why they did that.
You know, maybe, maybe just a paragraph that talks about in, in the event of, uh, the deputy terminating or being promoted, moving to another department, that there's an expression of good faith effort on the part of the sheriff's department to work with us to provide perhaps additional coverage during that period. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure. And that we would be, you know, maybe they can provide twenty hours of coverage. That we would be obligated to pay, uh, pay for, but some, some language that talks about good faith.
I think that would have happened except for the shortage through a monkey wrench.
Yeah, yeah. You're probably right.
Yeah. I think a lot of it was, there was no plan.
Yeah.
No contingency plan. And that's why I, what I, I, you know, like I said before, I don't want to tell the sheriff's department how to run their show, but they, you know, I, I do believe that they have enough contract deputies floating around.
Yeah.
All these towns, they should have at least a floater for people who take time off. And then, you know, and another thing too is, you know, you might promotions, you might have termination, but, you know, you know, with that, but you might also have an individual that might get a job somewhere else that's better, you know, that might just leave.
Well, one of the caveats though about, about being a contract deputy town is they do tend to keep their regular regiment of deputies in those contract towns. And I, it's obvious if you look around, okay? Um, so they may apt to be more in a contract town than they would be hanging out in a non-contract town. In the event, there's no contract deputy working.
Well.
That's always been the caveat is that that's what we'll, they'll try to do.
Well, you know, that may be another one, is you ask them to step up their coverage of their normal, um, officers who are, who are, who are working the county more generally. Ask them to step up the coverage of the town during periods like this.
Well, you could, you could kind of reassure or ask if that's being done. Uh, it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. It, it's, it's all about good faith, I think.
Yeah, well, that's, pretty much this contract is that. Everything on this contract is good faith.
Um, okay. Anything else on page four? Page five. Uh, it looks like boilerplate, I think, unless there's other comments. Um, we didn't specifically cover the budget. We covered a few items, but any comments about that?
It's really contractual. I mean, I think one of the, one of the only things that, that we've found in the past that we like to, I know that we ran into years ago, not to say now, but some of the things on here, um, we want to make sure that our, that our deputy, you know, is in fact getting, I think one of them was what, uniforms and equipment. Um, somehow it came up in conversation with one of our previous deputies, not the one that we have now. This was deputy two or go. Uh, we were talking, um, contracts and some of these things that were being billed for, we just want to make sure they're being utilized, you know? That they're spending the whole two hundred dollars, as minimal as that sounds, and they're getting their uniforms during the fiscal year.
Correct.
These are, um, fairly accurate numbers, so.
Well, um, not too often we all get together. Are there any other topics that we should be talking about? Off this, off this subject.
Is it okay if I open this up, uh?
No reason why we can't do that. I know it was announced as a workshop.
Situation with the rescue, Acton Rescue?
Yeah, I was just going to.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Why don't you go, go ahead, Bill. Oh, you go ahead with that. Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Tom. Uh, we had the problem with our rescue and you folks took what action you, you felt you needed to do. And, um, quite frankly, I, I, I think we're glad you did. It gave us a, a kick in the pants to, uh, get moving on that. Um, we've had a change of administration at our rescue and, um, uh, we're pleased to say that, um, just about every week, we have got almost a, well, the last couple of weeks, we've had a hundred percent, uh, coverage on our shifts. It's dramatically turned around.
That's great.
We're very pleased with it and, uh, it, it's some time, hopefully in the near future, you people may reconsider and have a change of heart of, of the, um, proposal you sent to us.
I'm sorry, reconsider what?
To remove it. It was a two thousand dollar.
Charge.
Charge. And we find that Acton responded to Shapley.
Assuming you weren't on a call. I mean, we, we're only charging that if you weren't on a, a call of your own.
No, I think, I, I don't know, but if, if we had data from, that was periodically provided where they would indicate where Acton might have responded to Shapley without somebody necessarily from Shapley being there. And/or vice versa. If we had data on that, then it seems to me if it's, if it's reasonably balanced, then, um, I'm, I'm not sure it's worth sort of exchanging payments back and forth.
Well, yeah, yeah. I, I believe the reason why we do it because the fire chief came to us and explained the situation. And, you know, really what we do is, or what we should be doing is, uh, you know, we take the information from our department heads and when they say, hey, this is an issue, da-da-da-da, and you're not the only one. We did that too. We also did that to Levittin, which, you know, the, the whole story there.
We're not disputing that. I think what we're saying now that we get our house in order now.
Is that address what you appreciated? A few folks would take another look at it.
Yeah, so what we'll, I think what we should do is we talk to our fire chief, see how everything's rolling on that end of it. I have no problem with it. Uh, we're just taking, we're taking from what our department head says that he feels he should be doing to run his department.
I, I fully understand why, why you felt the need to do that and you're doing your job looking out for the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he came to us.
But as of today, you guys, Shapley hasn't been billed at all. Is that correct?
Oh, no, no. To my knowledge, no.
Yeah, you haven't been billed, so.
No, I, I think he's, he's working on one. So to sort of cover us, just to be fully disclosed here, there, there, there will likely be one coming. I'm not quite sure how large it is or not, but personally, I would love to see that data. Just, it, it seems like a simple report that we could get from.
I'm sure he's got that.
Yeah, that, that could come, that maybe you two could just share that. And if, if everything looks, you know, reasonably balanced, let's, let's not take it any further. We don't want to have to bill you and vice versa. Let's just.
We don't, we don't really want to do that anyways.
If we can go to the Shapley, the Acton select one and say, you know, it's been thirty days without a call because we're not counting the mutual ableness. It's been thirty days or forty-five days. I'm sure they'd reconsider it.
Yeah.
And I, and we, and we do also understand that things happen with volunteer fire departments that, you know, I mean, just because we had to go to one or whatever, it, it's just an issue where there was a boatload of them where we had to go all the time.
We really do.
Well, I don't believe we would have made that decision.
We don't blame you. All, all we're saying is now things have changed. Could you please take another look at it? We will. Because we work together well and, and it would be nice if we could do that.
No, and we, and that's why we got you guys here. We figure, you know, we're working with the, the, um, county, the sheriff, the deputy. Um, I believe there's a lot of stuff that we can work with you guys with and, uh, we should, you know, we're neighbors.
We do a lot together.
I don't know if we used to be all Acton or all Shapley, but.
I'm curious about the transfer station, how it works for you. Cause I, I've looked at your website and you basically have a fee schedule for just about everything. And we aren't charging for anything. Anything. And we're, you know, now we got, you know, uh, the calling fees are up. We have people maybe dumping here that, you know, might not, ought to be dumping as it's free. And so we're looking at a fee schedule. I'm curious.
They're all coming from Shapley, charging them over there.
I'm curious what your thoughts are and how that's worked for you. And, um, is there, are you planning to tweak it in any way? Or are you happy with what you have?
We just did.
Really adjusting our fee schedule.
Yeah.
And, and some of the, uh, fees were increased dramatically because, as you said, we're being charged. We're not looking at it to, uh, make money. It's a subtle item like, like a mattress, we get charged, what is it?
Thirty-five.
Fifteen?
Fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars for mattress and we were doing like seven. So, so we brought it up just to break even. Um, I think people were coming from other communities or from away and bringing their mattresses because it was low.
Do you know if we use the same vendors?
We do not. Uh, there are some that we use. Um, so like Main Resource Recovery, who does the freon, takes the freon out of the refrigerators, that's the same, um.
Who does the compacted?
Uh, Herrick does ours and you have Troyano.
Have, have we ever compared our fees?
Well, we're on a, a different contract cycle, whereas Shapley just entered into an agreement, I believe it was a year ago. Acton is due, I want to say next year or this year in October.
I feel like it's coming up.
We've got, we've got issues.
So we saw, we saw the increase that you're going to see when your contract comes up.
Yeah.
So the timing has just.
You know, maybe it's of no value. In, in my prior life, we always tried to get multiple organizations together, in that case, universities, to do some joint procurement. The idea with volume, you can affect price. And maybe, maybe our two towns can't, can't carry that, but there are other towns in the area that are all dealing with transfer stations and it may be worthwhile at some point to think about, um, you know, getting on the same cycle and possibly doing some joint contracting, um, and try to get this price down.
Now, Michelle, did they use to sell that idea?
Uh, yeah, they're in the same contract of fourteen, twelve towns.
And the question several months ago that was sent through probably you as well is, do we want to go alone or do we want to go as, as a group?
That's where I'm.
Personally, I, I agree to go with a group rather than, you know, the strength of numbers.
You can do it on a whole host of things that, you know, I think transfer station really does lend itself to that. Although if there's only one vendor, you're probably not going to get if, uh, if there's only, uh, one service provider. But if there are multiples and you get them to, you know, bid aggressively to buy the business, you know, we can all benefit from that.
Thing I like about the user fees of the transfer station is that, um, you know, you've got a lot of people in town that just go up to the top, throw a bag of trash in. And then you've got other people that use the, the lower section and bring a lot of, a lot of items.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, they should pay for that, not the general taxpayer base, if you will. Um, and, uh, we're only asking them, as, as Bill said, to pay whatever it costs a town.
I think our biggest problem is our demolition. I think it's probably our biggest problem, uh, well, at least one of them. And, uh, we were talking about doing a fee because, you know, with all the buildings going on, instead of taking it down to Simpsons, they're bringing it here, the roof in and everything else. And, uh, I think our demolition doubled, didn't it, Michelle?
Yeah.
Yeah, doubled. So as we're looking at it, we, all we want to do is just offset. Uh, we don't want to make money out of it. I mean, it's not, we're not into making money. We're end up, you know, keeping the, keeping that department as flat-lined as we can. Obviously, you can't flat-line because you're always dealing with the, you know, increases of, but now wages and this and that. But when it comes to the transfer station stuff, you know, we got to offset it somewhere.
A lot of that demolition that comes in, we, we won't accept having bring it to Simpsons, um,
Ah.
directly themselves, um, right out of town. And if they were to bring it in, it's going to fill that dumpster, that can right up.
Yeah.
Then there's no.
Your prices are still less than Simpsons. So that's why we, right? And that's why you tell them, it's just not accepted, Tom.
How long have you been charging and if you started recently, what was the resonant sort of reaction to that?
It's been ten, you've been charging for at least ten years, ten, fifteen?
More than that.
So when you introduced the, maybe it was before your time, but when you introduced the fees, uh, what kind of reaction did you get?
Before my time.
I actually worked for Shapley and I can tell you, when we, when they started doing them there, I think that it went fairly well with the property owners because as I've mentioned to you guys in meetings, they send the demo, they send the free loads. You get two free loads.
Yeah.
So, you know, taxpayers recognize that they shouldn't be paying for someone else's demo. So I think it, it went fairly smoothly. I don't remember us having a big tada about it. They took it pretty well.
At the same time too is, you know, the actual, right now, the taxpayers paying for all that extra demo, that's not really, it's not fair to them.
They may not be using it.
They're not using it. You know, it's kind of like the idea, you know, I don't have any kids, but all the school, we pay for the school, but up there.
This is a little.
They're paying for all the demo that they're not putting there. So everybody's, you know, throwing their trash and stuff, which that's great and all that. I would never ever want to, you know, go to that real example or anything, you know, but, uh, but at the end of the day, uh, we do have to offset this because we can't, we can't catch every load that's coming out of town.
Right.
You know, but, you know, we, the people, the stuff that is coming from out of town, we shouldn't be paying for.
Sure. The most important thing about our fee schedule is making sure that it's accurate and up to date. When people come in and throw a mattress away and it's fifteen dollars now and the slip still says seven, that's, that's when you see something.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had shingles, I want to say at seven dollars a yard for disposal. When, you know, I calculated out what, what a yard costs, what, what the average yard of shingles weighs, asphalt shingles, and what you're disposing of it, I mean, we were losing a lot of money.
Now you are.
Uh, so that, that's why all of these prices, I mean, some of them jumped dramatically, but because we have to recover our costs.
Right, but you're doing just the cost that the town is spending.
Right, we're not trying to make money off it. We're just trying to sustain.
What do you use for fuel? Propane, oil?
In our buildings?
Yeah.
Propane.
Propane, right?
Propane and I'm trying to think at the public safety building is propane. Is there oil there also? Number two oil, yeah.
I don't think we have any oil, do we?
We have one of the, um, we have a small one at the gym.
Well, you know, for the future, that, I think we're happy with the, the contract we just renewed. But at some point in the future, we, especially with the rising cost of fuel, we should keep an eye on that one. And if there's an opportunity to compare notes and consider joining together, I think anything that you might come up with or, or we come up with, we should, you know, consider doing that.
That's a great idea. We, I, when I was road commissioner back in the day, I, we were putting out our, our pavement bids and Shapley, you guys had gotten your pavement bid and it was a smoking good price, right?
Yeah.
So the guy from, uh, I'm not even named the company, calls and says, yeah, would you like to come up? And I said, well, geez, should go get the same price Shapley got. Uh, he says, uh, there was a little bit of war between a couple of different paving companies. All you got to do is take a left instead of a right. At Mouse of Lake, what's the difference? But, you know, we couldn't get the same price. It's odd how they do that. You would think it'd be the same thing.
Well, after the fact, it's probably had to do it. You haven't, you haven't started that way. So, but, but if we could, you know, put it out that way on any of these sides, they're great on the roads. There must be all kinds of opportunity there.
So a couple of things, getting back to the, uh, transfer station, um, first of all, I've heard nothing but great things about your recycle program. Sometime, uh, like to come by and just observe how it's done and everything, but it's all been positive. Uh, the other thing that has been popular at, at our transfer station is what they call the, the free table.
Oh, we have one. We have a goodie table.
Oh, oh, Shapley Walmart.
We got the active ball.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Someone, someone came up and asked why the active ball was closed one night. I had no idea what they were talking about it.
Do you have one of those tables down?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a little building, actually, a little, a little shed, I think. Isn't that right?
The Goodie Shack.
Yeah, the Goodie Shack, yeah. We shut it down, uh, for a while during, I think it was COVID, and we wouldn't believe the negative feedback, but.
Love their free stuff.
Yeah, well, this individual was too because they, they, ours was shut down for a little while. We had no reason why, but it's open now, I guess, so.
Uh, can I, uh, one thing, you asked if we had anything else on this contract. It was one thing that I had highlighted and I had asked, uh, and I think, Michelle, you might have looked into it, uh, on the accrued, uh, paid time off. The question in my mind is, uh, why should Acton Shapley be responsible for, uh, anything that's been accrued prior to this deputy in that contract?
Great point. Great point. It's already been funded and they don't need to be funded again.
I'm sure the union or, you know, something over the.
That's, that's accounting though. It's not, I, I don't think it's a contractual issue with the, because as long as they get, as long as the officer gets the payment, that's all the contract he has. But this is accounting. They've already set something aside in liability.
I did ask about that and I was told that, that basically they, they, you wouldn't get hit with the full force of it. But I think to have it in the contract would be a better way to root to go with it.
Good point.
I think this has been pretty beneficial.
Yeah, I think so.
Good to see you folks.
Yeah. We ought to just, you know, if there's issues, we ought to just call a session like this and, you know, talk about it. If the, for instance, with your, uh, with your ambulance emergency services, you know, another way of handling that might have been to just get together, explain to you what our perspective was and sort of understand what your plans were and, and kind of.
But we understand. You know, it's funny, we didn't have a plan.
And well, that would have been, that would have been fine and.
And that's why I said you guys jumped, kick-started us to, to do something.
We're really fortunate to have the fire department that we have and these guys are dedicated. And, uh, we, we do put, uh, we give them a lot of resources and, uh, they put it to use. And, uh, cause you know, I was, I was one of those guys back in the day, oh gee, full time, I don't know, you know? Uh, but it, it's, uh, it's been worth its weight in gold.
It's appreciated in the town too.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, guys coming all the way over here to the big city.
Great to see you, Michelle.
You too.
You haven't forgotten how to get here, so that's.